Were you related to father?
Yeah, he's my dad.
It's seven o'clock.
We don't have one doing.
We can do everything then, but a group of men, I guess, if we need to. No voting. Not sure the status of Tim. I talked to him today, but. We can talk about that later on.
You're going it together with Bill. You're going it together with Bill.
The company is better here. Dan, we're just waiting here to to start the meeting. We're gonna give him a couple more minutes. To hopefully get it formed.
Sounds good. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Great.
An awful nice night out. Hard to give it up for a week.
Yeah. Did you walk? You want to write on?
It's this nice going on the walk.
Well, I don't know. Probably start.
Eric says the same. When I dealt with that baby.
Well, yeah. If we want to get started. With the presentation, why did you go ahead? And. I'm just, um, just Dan.
Dan's here.
Well, Monica, you want to open the meeting?
I will open the meeting. Would you like, would you call roll?
Um, John Manson. Mike Burke.
Here.
Andrew Gerloff. Tim Hamer. Tom Stewart.
Yeah.
And Monica McHugh.
Here.
And so we'll hold off a minute. Yeah, we'll hold off a minute. If John shows up. You guys should try to say it. Well, I'm very. Should hear the my brain.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yes.
I know she emailed.
Yeah. There's anything else about five, there's about six months.
My God.
Not gonna happen.
But this is, this is a presentation. Given my voice, I. Will do the best I can dance here in case it stops altogether. So this presentation is as I'm giving overview about the conference plan. We were trying to practice in your office.
That's so. Yeah. I was just looking. There was a. There's Sarah. It's time. I have to scroll.
For introductions. I recognize everybody here, but I'm Laura Hurstons. I'm Senior Planner at East Central Intergovernmental Association. Dan Fox is on Zoom. He's also with ECIA as a senior planner. And he and I are the two staff from ECIA working on this project. And just a reminder, ECIA is a council of governments. And we work in five different counties in Northeast Iowa. On a variety of topic areas and including conference plans. So the goals for this work session for the commission are. I'm gonna go over the planning process and talk about the steering committee. And then discuss the community survey questions. Just start with just the basics of what is a comprehensive plan? What it is is it's a document that provides a vision, long range goals, objectives for activities. That generally are around the growth and development of a community or county. Use the word comprehensive because it covers a wide range of issues. We'll talk about those in a little bit. The long range is generally a 20 year timeframe. It is a policy guide, so it is not regulatory like the zoning ordinance. It is intended to provide policy direction. Based on public participation through that shared vision process. It also is important that you have a comprehensive plan because Iowa code. Requires any zoning regulations remaining in accordance with a comprehensive plan. So that's important for us to have that in place. The benefits are, and we've mentioned it's it's a policy guide, and so it helps with decision making. It also provides for continuity, some predictability. Things are pretty complex out there. This kind of brings things together and how they're interconnected. Helps with our understanding and also for decision makers. It also is a way to protect and build on your public investments, whether they're. There are roads, bridges, trails. Or facilities because it's part of the overall process. It's also a really good chance for the entire community throughout the county. To come together and talk about what what do they want to see? For the county, what do they enjoy, what maybe could be changed? And so that's a nice opportunity there. Typically, a conference plan will have an introduction. It'll discuss the existing conditions. So you'll have a baseline. That shared vision for the future will be part of it. And then specific topics listed here are part of. The Iowa code. So we'll be working on public participation or also identifying. Characteristics of the county, land use, housing, facilities, infrastructure, utilities. Transportation, economic development. Natural resources, agriculture. We're also gonna add parks and recreation, as renovation, intergovernmental coordination as part of the plan. The result will be that there'll be recommendations in those areas. That'll then be part of a chapter and implementation of how we move forward. These might be policies. It might be action items. Many might be capital investments. Part of it is we'll just wait and see how how this goes. The zoning commission has a role under Iowa law. For the conference plan, tasks for the commission on that. You're charged with preparing the plan, reviewing, and in our case, we're gonna have to. Prepare it for you, give you draft chapters and maps. Once it's finalized, we have a final draft. Then the commission's requirement will be public hearing. On that comprehensive plan. And at that point, you recommend. Adoption of a final draft to the board of supervisors. Board of supervisors, once they receive that recommendation, they may ask at their own hearing. They hold a hearing for adoption of the comprehensive plan. Subsequently, if there's amendments or updates, the commission has a very similar role. The public participation that we have talked about for this project. Would be trying to bring people together in a variety of ways. We want them to get. We'll have to get their input and try and have a community consensus about that. Shared vision. So we're we've got a couple of additional steps besides the commission and the board supervisors. One is a steering committee, which we'll talk about a little bit. A community survey that would be available. Public workshops where people could come. And do them in person, but also through Zoom. And we'll probably have about three of those to get input in the plan. We're working on a project website, which would be another way for people to provide. Input will have a your ideas page, level into the community survey. And my contact information. We're also looking to add some ways we might use social media. We have a Facebook page at ECIA. And we might also, we might also be able to use some other resources. To help us. The public meetings that the commission and board of supervisors have will be open to the public. But there's also those two formal hearings that I mentioned. So those are all part of that public participation process, which also may. Grow to other other things as we go through and we see. Other opportunities to reach out to people. So we have. As part of this process, we have a steering committee that would be separate. From the commission. So the commission has its job under the code. And the steering committee would be there to help augment that process. Right now, the board of supervisors has talked about 12 to 15 members. We're thinking they probably would meet up to about two to three times. The idea is this is a wide spectrum of stakeholder groups, so we'd get a variety of skill sets and perspectives. And their role would be to focus on that broader vision and the goals. And the invitations or suggested stakeholder groups discussed at. The kickoff meeting with the supervisors were these. Representation from any of the cities that are interested in Jackson County. At least three of them that I know have their own comprehensive plans or in the process of updating one. There's also the thought that perhaps there'd be a representative from the board of supervisors. The zoning commission and the conservation department. Additional stakeholder groups were. Jack, Jackson County Farm Bureau. Jackson County Economic Alliance. Tourism associations. There's Jackson County one. There's a Bellevue one. Community Foundation of Jackson County. Local chambers of commerce. And area contractors. A couple that I, one that that I added just for consideration is. Perhaps someone, something in the healthcare field. I just threw a Jackson County Regional Hospital in there as suggestion there, and they're maybe ours. If you have any thoughts on who might be good on this, maybe this would be a good time. To share that because we are in need with the supervisors tomorrow. So any input you have now, we can share with that. Thoughts, questions I have while we come back.
Somebody from emerges sort of. Fire or anything.
And I have one to throw out if you guys are interested. Someone from IDA. I would have part of transportation. I know a guy that just retired from there out of the Dewitt shop recently, and he might have some availability. But Joe Kilber, you know, because they. When you're talking infrastructure and where we're gonna be growing or where our projected growth is, they might have some type of actual. Input just from working.
I would pick somebody other than the maintenance. I, if you're looking at somebody from the DOT. I would look at, so the DOT is in, I think they still have their six. District offices. And I would pick. A planner. Out of there rather than somebody for maintenance is what I would look at.
I just wanted to ask if that's a possibility or suggestion.
Something I would consider is with three of the towns of Oklahoma, Bellevue, Preston, put on the state of that were comprehensive. Maybe they have a designated representative, whether it be a city person. Or a designated person from the town that's familiar with their comp plans. So we can see how they might tie together with ours.
Sure.
Because when they're talking about expanding areas, because you'll. In the city plan, they they talk about listing the future housing growth and all that kind of stuff. It would be good to kind of have that background information of their perspectives. Of course, the kind of.
I don't know who would be also just looking at this. I don't. I mean, you could, it could be covering, but I don't really see us covering like. Somebody from down in the Sevula. Far east type of thing. But I think we need to make sure we're getting somebody.
Is is there an association out of Sevula that I?
Well, there's the new welcome. There's only, I don't know. Maybe if we contacted. I can't remember the names. They just built that big welcome sign there. And we didn't approve.
We just approved the, yeah. No, 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 no. That's different. Because where the actual Iowa State Welcome Center is.
Oh.
But I do have a farmer down there in mind that I can pop her name out to you guys later. I just want to make sure you know we're hitting.
Entire county, yeah. So I'm looking for geographic as well.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And I know I mentioned Dave Manning to you guys. And Dave was. I know you were on the commission when Dave was trying to get.
Yeah. We we were, we put a lot of time into this, you know, when I was on. I wasn't on very long and we did something similar, you know, but it's different. We were trying to get the same thing accomplished and put a lot of work and time into it. And then the supervisors at the time shot it down. Because they got some public backlash. And so I'm really glad you two are here, you know, for the initial part of this and. It was kind of disappointing, you know, because we had put a lot of work into it. But the more people we get involved and, you know, and take ownership of it, I guess, the better. We tried to do that at the time, but we didn't have the resources we do now.
Right. Because we have, the board of supervisors actually voted in November, no. November, I believe it was, for this to happen after July first. The first of this year allocated the funding for it.
Yeah.
Which is kind of a 50 50 split between Jackson County and ECIA. The money's from there.
I will say, I went through the process. I was there when McCook went through that process. Ever since we got it in place, it seems like the one of the checkbox. Criteria for grants, and now does your community have a comprehensive plan?
You're right.
And if no, you fall to the bottom of the list. So. In order to be in the running for pretty much any kind of expansion or grants through the state or different organizations, this is kind of almost insensitive. So.
But Dave Manning is one I'd like to reach out to.
Yeah, Dave, you know, Dave, you know, like I said. He's very knowledgeable and we put a lot of time into this. But we had a good plan. I.
Yeah.
You know, the the overall plan that, you know, had worked with quite sound in it, but there just was too much, you know, public pushback and the supervisors. You know, declined to move forward with it.
What was the pushback? What was it?
Well, the 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 basic concept was there was gonna be a zone along the river that was. You know, about, I can't remember how many miles in, and it bumped out around the cities, you know, Bellevue and.
Yeah.
And all, and 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 in several cities. And that was more for residential and housing. And especially along the river, we were gonna have a corridor there that was more for tourism and, you know, trying to keep the aesthetics. Good on it. And then the highway system was more for industrial expansion. And then trying to keep the agricultural areas, you know, agricultural and. I can't remember. They got pushed back from different directions and I I can't remember if there was. Just accumulation of different things. I think it was, they didn't like the idea of, there was a lot of people didn't like the idea that. They couldn't do what they wanted to along the river. Was a lot of it at the time. But this is, this is a long time ago, so I might not. You know, I might not be remembering, you know, exactly what, you know, what it was. I've been on the board a while.
If there aren't any ideas, that's fine. If you have any thoughts after the meeting, send it to Lori.
Yeah, because I mean, we should have, we should have. Representation, you know, following Monmouth areas. They should all be included. I I'm not so sure about the hospital, but I think. If you have everybody included to get the buy in. Is kind of a big deal. Yeah, we might go recover some of that, like with EMS. And fire even, or even farmers, you know, like if someone, you know, if your farm bureau was from some of those areas.
I. You can pick somebody from Farm Bureau. However. You have to remember, not all the farmers. Support or are members of Farm Bureau.
Absolutely.
Is there another? Group?
There is not.
But. So that's what you have to be very careful on because. I do know that there are farmers that are not pleased with Farm Bureau. And. May not support. What, you know, what what they would recommend.
Yeah, because they're kind of a. Okay. Lobbying body.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they are. And and so. There are some that do not believe that they represent all of the farmers. So.
I agree with that.
But we don't have enough.
So I'm not sure. So am I.
So there isn't a. Another type of organization we can use to reach out to farmers that aren't members of that group? Other than individual contact.
Well, you, you almost have to have Farm Bureau involved because Farm Bureau was the big dog in the room, so to speak.
Right.
When it comes to, you know, lobbying politics. So you almost have to have at least reach out to them and give them the average.
No, I agree. We 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 had them involved in. In Dubuque County, along with the cities that have comprehensive plans. So. If there's other representation. I mean, there's all sorts of firm representation. I mean, you have the Iowa soybean, the Iowa corn growers, and the. You know, cattle and things like that. So there's all sorts of. Farm groups that are out there to represent people.
Gotcha. So.
I still want to make sure to keep Jackson County. The focus.
Yes.
Start talking about Iowa's.
And I I agree, but each of these groups also have. They also have county people. That are involved. You know, you have the Jackson County cattle. Some of those are are members of both groups.
Jackson County dairy, Jackson.
You know, they, yeah, there's, exactly. So. I would not just. They they do, but to be perfectly honest, Jackson County isn't, isn't a big. Hog producer and and the terrain isn't.
It it affects you greatly if you're next to one.
Oh, trust me, I know. We had one very close in when we lived in Hamilton County.
Most of them are building below master matrix standards that don't.
Yeah.
Us involved.
Yeah. But I, but the train here is not really conducive to hog compliance.
The bigger, the big.
The the big outfits. So I mean, there's not a lot of hog production in the county, to be honest.
No.
There is, but not compared to public.
Right. And and not compared to what they're used to.
Yeah.
We're having a new one coming in.
Everybody used to have hogs or most everybody.
Yeah.
Okay.
You do have to be a little careful about making your steering committee debate though.
Yeah, that's true. I'm not sure 12 to 15 is a good. Number. I would, I would prefer to see something smaller than that. I think that's kind of. I know we want to be inclusive to make sure that, you know, we cover Jackson County. But 12 to 15 seems like. Almost too big in in the way they time.
Well, you've got 10. If you just.
Organization puts probably now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So who are you gonna? I don't think we had it. It was around 12 or 14. It would work out. It would work out. Because it wasn't a whole bunch from one particular, they all kind of were selected for a different reason. So it was more of an individual point of view or expertise or particular thing that they all were told again. So. I mean, you've got a lot.
I think that's what you want to try to get there too, is a wide variety. I mean. You don't want the same eight people that are on every. Organization in the county. Because then you're not gonna get the buyouts, buy-ins. What about, I mean, real estate? Because you've got. Agents that are, you know, that focus solely on homes, but then you've got agents that are. Focused on agricultural land as well. And I mean, it's. So I mean, they kind of have a a good idea on values, land values and things like that. I mean.
Well, and trends, maybe future trends. But your your egg, your egg realtor is gonna say, yeah, we need to keep these parcel bigger parcels bigger so that we don't have. All these smaller parcels, but your person that specializes in single family residence is gonna be encouraging smaller.
And you've got, and you've got realtors that are, you know, that do vote. So.
Yeah.
You know, if you have a.
They could have some.
Yeah.
So so give me the concept here now. And the steering committee brings their ideas to this group? Or right to the supervisors?
Well.
Okay.
So the. The. Commission will be doing the work that I described as in the code, which is.
Right.
And. Our Dan and I's experience with larger groups. Is that it's difficult to keep their attention for more than two or three meetings. With the the absenteeism. People just don't show up. So idea of having a larger group, we think can work. Because we're not gonna be probably more than two or three times. And we'll just, we'll tend to lose them. They'll just drop out. And so that's the other idea was to have this broad representation. Trying to make it as broad as possible in addition to the public workshops, which is another opportunity. To have the focused stakeholder group a little bit larger because we're gonna concentrate on one or two sessions with them.
And we have four or three meetings and what time?
Well, let's see. Oh, what a great segue.
Schedule here, huh?
Might be a little hard. Is there a way for me to move this? Okay, so we are on, we are on a 12 months schedule. Can you all see that? It was just a little bit of words.
We've got to.
So it's color coded. So we're in the gray part, which is the let's get organized, having our initial meetings. Oh, did you move it a little bit?
I did. I forgot to do that.
And then we're also already starting that kind of brown, the community data analysis. So I. We're looking for information. The kind of peachy color, that's actually drafting the plans. Chapters and the chapters and the maps that are going to the plan. We're starting that. And so there you see where the zoning commission has a series of meetings. Bring that information to the commission for you to look at because that's gonna be the drive, comprise the draft plan that'll. We'll have a public hearing. Then the yellow is the public engagement. So we talked about the project website, which we're working on. Talked about the community survey, which we'll talk about a little bit more. And then there's three blocks. Targeted for steering committee meetings. And public workshops. They may or may not be on the same day. That idea was that we can maybe spaced out early September, December, and maybe another one in March. As opportunities for these groups to provide input. So the first one would be more of. So the first one would be more of. What do you like? What would you like to see improved? Um, and then the other two may be a little bit more reactionary to here's what we're hearing, now learn your thoughts. Um, and so that, that is the thought process there. Kind of lighting those up. They may in fact be different days, they might be different months, but. Um, we thought that. Having the synergy of having them in the same month makes sense. Oh, and then the, the next stage then after that is, is. Um, towards the beginning of, of spring, we're, we're finalizing. Um, the plan. At the commission level, then the public hearings, I mentioned, um. Occur hopefully in May and June. We're trying to keep this into a, a twelve month process. If, if possible. So that, that was our thought on the schedule. We'd also do the, the community survey, and we're going to talk about, we would do that early too, because that can give us a lot of information, hopefully. We get a good response, you know, information, and that can be one of those, well, we're trying to get that geographic and. Um, different type of variety of people, hopefully, um, providing their thoughts. And some people don't want to talk at the beginning, but. You know, they'd rather take us for bait. So we also want to be kind as in, people prefer different ways to share their opinions and. Try to have ways where they can do that. And so the budget we talked about really quickly is a, is a cost here. Um, our estimated cost is fifty thousand with a fifty fifty cost share. The community survey is, um, we found has been a really good tool for getting people engaged. Um, we've used that for comprehensive plans, we've also used other types of plans. We would recommend that we do an online version, which we can hope, we can, uh, have, um, available on our website. And also on, uh, the zoning department website, that'd be a link to get to that, but also paper copies. Uh, one of the things that I'd suggest is we've got four public libraries. In the county and that we use those as repositories. Uh, we did this for a regional bike plan in Dubuque County, um. That went over into Illinois and Wisconsin, and so we use the libraries in those communities. They're open in the evenings, they're open on Saturdays, so that's, um, a wider range of hours. It's also a place people are used to going. Someplace familiar and fairly safe, that they feel comfortable, and so we were able to get, um. Uh, um, also having people turn in paper copies, or they could get, or they could scan a QR code and do online surveys, so. And we can also talk about other ways that would work in the county. Beijing equals. So the topics that we had looked at. Um, here, we want to get your feedback on. They deal with quality of life and what is, what is the county like at the present? And then looking at some questions related to residential development. Growth and development priorities, uh, services that are available countywide, conditions throughout the county. Um, perhaps specifically about county government offices. And then some demographic information about the people taking, filling out the survey. So I'm going to walk through those. Um, we'll, we'll walk through that survey, but these are the thoughts I'd like you to have. In your mind as we go through that survey. Uh, if you see any of the topics. Any of the questions, anything you'd like to see changed or added. And then we'll take questions. Anything besides the community survey, if there's still questions or comments on.
I have a question, Brian. Do you guys ever, when you're doing your survey, include anything about renewable energy, wind, solar?
Um, could.
Have you in the past?
We can include whatever you want.
I asked her if they included anything about wind, solar, renewable energy. I don't, I mean, I know it's, we're opening Pandora's box.
Yeah, but it's kind of.
Well, we, yeah.
It's here.
Yeah, pretty much. And, you know, just getting a hold of it now.
So the basic element, this would be, uh, um, it'll look a little bit, it'll work a little bit different online, but. Um, we have an online program. That will collect the data and then provide us with an analysis of it. It also collects all the comments. Uh, and so it's, it's a really great way for us to quickly get. Information about what are people thinking about. So the, the thought process we had was maybe we ask some questions about the quality of life here. Um, what, what people, how people would rate the quality of life? Um, how has it changed over the last five years? Um, is this what you envisioned for the county? Um, and how accurate was economic? Conditions. And then there's another open, there's some open ended questions. Here are opportunities, I should say, for people to talk about something. What they're, what are they thinking about in terms of how they might, might improve the quality of life? Or what, some reasons why they, Jackson County is a place to live. There's the rest of this, right there. Oh, there we go. Just got sandwiched in between these schedules, sorry about that. The next step was to look at Jackson County. At present, and so these are just some, some ideas. And this, this is maybe, maybe this is one of the places where renewable energy or maybe that was a different one, or looking at things. Where people can give us a reaction. They strongly disagree or disagree somewhat, or they just agree strongly, or they're just don't know. Um, and just some various activities that people might think about. In terms of what do they like about Jackson County, or what would they like to see more of in Jackson County, or. Or what, where do they think renewable comes from? Touching on properties and safety, the rural agricultural character of this county, access. Recreation and so forth, you see there. And then we move into that, the section about residential development. So that would be, hopefully, we knew where people lived and specifically if they lived in a city, which city. Uh, that would be, yeah. Interesting to know, kind of also helps us find out where people are, so we know we're getting a geographic spread. Also, um, trying to find out how long have they been here. Um, and how long do they think they're going to continue to live here? And then, where do they, what kind of housing do they have? Do they own or rent? Are they happy with their current housing? And then finding out if there's interest in moving to a different type of housing. And whether it would be here in Jackson County or elsewhere. And then, again, another open ended question about. If they wanted to move. Uh, another one, uh, is rating the quality overall of. Housing in the community. And then this is a question for people to think about. In terms of this supply of housing. What does it look like for families, for renters, young professionals, people over sixty-five, first time homeowners, persons with disabilities? Those are the major, uh, you know, others, kind of get, get a sense, perhaps there might be some. Um. Agreement or. Category. The next section is for, uh, growth and development priorities. So what we have here is we have. We have ten items. We have had longer lists, fifteen, seventeen, twenty, and people get overwhelmed. And trying to rate them from one to twenty or one to fifteen.
I would, I see you, I see you guys there, because I was going to bring it up, but no, there's got to be a place in there. You know, where the preserve and protect viable land for agriculture, that's a, that can be a hot, uh, button item, you know?
Right, right. So the one right above it, promote economic development within and around the cities.
Right.
Is linked to that one. If the development occurs around the city, and then you're also protecting it. Uh, preserving ag land.
And that's exactly where we were trying to go when we did this before.
Sure.
Yeah, that was the same concept.
Um, from a planning perspective, that's, that's, that's a good way. To keep people living.
Yeah, try to.
Not everyone, but for the most part, if you have people living near services and cities. And that agricultural land, it becomes easier to preserve it.
Yep. It, it does, but then when you get more people who buy the acreages outside and don't like the farm smells. That's the other, you know, issue. Yeah, you run into as well.
Yep, and I don't have a lot of patience for somebody who moved to the.
I don't either, but.
And then, so in addition to those two things, which are kind of directly related to development, there's also the idea. What other things might be related to growth and development, quality of life. Healthy active living, um, places to shop and work, um. Having, uh, workforce that's skilled, able to recruit, build it. Um, having those natural amenities, parks, and so forth, that people like. Having a variety of housing. Different costs in different locations. Um, having a safe and efficient transportation network and then attractions. Yeah, we can make this list a little longer, but. We thought ten was probably, is probably a good number, able to rank one through ten. The next. Area is countywide service, services, so this is. This is the list that. We've pulled together, you might see this, you left something off. We did break up recreational programs for youth and adults. Um, and everything else is pretty much. We didn't do that at school, schools are just. But we've. Put in different types of services, um, if there's some we haven't hit, we can add those. This, um. Do we have renewable energy in the county?
No. We, we have the moratorium on for development until January, because we're working on.
And solar?
We haven't really discussed solar. But we didn't put a moratorium on that, but we haven't heard of any panning around on it either.
There's some in communities, but not necessarily larger.
Not solars, not, um. Industrial scale, yeah.
Um, the next section is conditions in the county. So some of the things that people would typically see or use, the streets, roads and bridges. Curbs and trails, the county facilities. Um, also what they think of the condition overall, residential, commercial, industrial properties. Agricultural properties and recreation areas. Just kind of getting a sense of how satisfied are people with these? Oh, sorry, schools and healthcare, slipped down onto the next page. Um, the other thing I thought. Maybe would like to have information on is the offices within the Jackson County government, so. Uh, this is a list, I think the only one I left off was maintenance, because that seemed like it was for this building. If it's not, I can add it back on, but basically the major offices. Um, and departments that are at your office director, everyone I used. Here. It also might be a good, a good chance for people to understand how many services the county doesn't provide. They may not be familiar with all of them. Then the last part is, um, demographic information, um. This is helpful, people will, will fill it out, gives us a sense of. Who the respondents are, so we get not only, at the beginning, if they tell us where they live, we also find out, are they men or women? What's their typical household income? What's their typical education level? Who they own a business? Um, what's their age range? Um, where are they working? Are they working in the county? Are they, are they working from home? Um. Race and ethnicity information, and if they have children. This just gives us a nice sense of who's answering the questions. And then one more open ended. Um, comments at the end. So again, like. I think go to any page you want, any list you want to look at, you want to review those. There anything we've, we talked about renewable energy, did we? Did I think of anything else? We didn't, we didn't yet. Oh, you're, you're, I mean, you're doing some driving, yeah, you're driving, okay. Listen, try and see if there's any. Sandra?
Yes, this is Sandra.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure we that you knew we acknowledged that you're there. Um, I know you came on a bit late, but we are recording this and we'll be able to, um, put it on the county website. For you to review later.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that's where the, that's where the growth, development priorities. Back up and down again.
Now we have quite a few there, but maybe that's where we could be, we could add, um. You know how important they feel that the development of. Wind or renewable energy resources are.
I think let's leave that one off.
Because, because we are working, we are.
I, yeah, we're, we're working on that, but I just, I don't know, I think. I think until we have a plan in place for that. I don't know, what do you think, um?
I'd kind of like to see it on there, see what kind of reaction we get out of her.
It'd be a mixed bag, I, yeah, makes the lead one more one way. Even though we do have people that are interested in having sites.
So, so the other place would be, is it, is with the other utilities.
Okay.
Under, this is the countywide services, so quality of services provided throughout Jackson County. Renewable, renewable energy perhaps could go there. We could break it out, solar and wind as well.
Okay.
But would that make it somewhere in Florida here anymore?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to, I don't think it should go on there.
And, and I thought, well, my thought was.
You don't have.
Right, but that way they might be very happy, very satisfied at this point. And if they're dissatisfied, means, oh yeah, bring it.
Well, I think, I think your top ten things that you had up there was probably the better spot for it. Cause that's your problem.
And on those county services where you put electrical and gas. Unfortunately, whether they're happy with their service or not, those are usually divided out in the territories, then there's, that's it, it is what it is.
Right, there is no.
You can pray, you can pray, you can whatever you want, there is no change.
No change.
Because that is set by the island until it's born, territories are set.
Yeah. You can include the internet, your cell phone, like this is the gas.
Well, the, the internet's, the internet's not, you don't jump around on that.
Right.
Yeah.
Some areas you can, some areas.
But it's not like electricity or.
Right.
Electricity.
Yeah, so if I didn't live where I live, I wouldn't be able to get by.
Right, but fiber is divvied up where, we'll go to the valley goes here, um. Bernard goes here, with lost nation.
Well, yeah, see, there's crossing over on that, it's, it's starting to.
The Coca Valley company, but they won't, because I'm too expensive, because I'm in the end of the line.
Right.
Well, they'll come to you. It's just you're going to pay after you get it.
No, they won't come to me.
Now, it's, we got. Company, but I mean, that's, that's why I don't think it makes a lot of difference. Company, but I mean, that's, that's why I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference, because you're basically getting anything. Except for what you have.
Well, but I've got great internet service, because I've got it through my, my, through Cascade.
Internet, internet is much more a business decision.
Yeah.
Macokey Valley is deciding where we go. You know, to, to serve, because, you know, it's, it's so, it's, you know, Kamala Lincoln. And, you know, there's some, there's, what's, what's the one that's out now, I'm on? Is, you know, starting to get into the area.
But that doesn't have. County, county can't control.
I mean, we can. So it's not. But see, it's not really a county provided service either, so.
Quality of life.
Quality of life, it is.
Countywide service.
Right. Countywide is definitely county provided, but. See, the problem that I'm seeing is with the countywide services, when you see that. It almost.
It's telling me what's the county providing.
Right, what's the county.
You said it differently, so you gotta.
I, I would say.
It's gotta be the service.
Services available in the county. I think is how I would do that, rather than countywide services, because. You know, like law enforcement, fire, I, I mean, all the fires is volunteer, but I mean.
It's a little bit misleading, and it says about the quality of services provided throughout Jackson County, it doesn't say provided by Jackson County, but it says throughout Jackson.
Right.
And then Joe Dougie lightly read it.
It says countywide services. They, that's where you're getting.
Right.
And you look at countywide and just said, you know.
Available. Available within Jackson County.
Try and make that real distinct, because I list the. County service, county government. And I could switch the order of them, and that might make it easier.
There is something at the state level, maybe done and then you can tell me which department it is. That has been traveling Iowa. And interviewing people and talking about internet, about the availability. Like, we just got internet a year and a half ago, we were in an internet desert. No site business, thank goodness, from the Macokey Valley, we have excellent. Excellent, but there is a group that's studying that. And doing town hall work sessions, I don't know if either of you have been a part of that or not.
There is, because the, the state's been working on that for a long time, and I don't know.
Because I know.
I just don't know who it is, I know they talk about. The broadband initiative, trying to get broadband in, in. As many places as they can, going to Bushport, but I can't tell you who's actually out doing this town hall meetings and stuff.
Is that something else you wanted on the growth, top ten growth movement as the broadband?
I don't, are we really, I mean, now that.
We're, we're actually, we're actually in a pretty good spot. Macokey Valley, we, we. We.
I'm just saying, Macokey, now that Macokey, pretty much getting.
Oh yeah, Bernard, between Bernard, Preston, the telcos in Macokey Valley is really, you know, you know. Provided a, provided a service, providing a service in Jackson County, because you, you know, Macokey Valley doesn't serve you, but you back could serve.
Well, I do now, but I know when, when, prior to the. Prior to them coming in, the frustration was. We needed, I needed really good service for a year until they could bring it in. And I asked if Bernard would provide service for me, and they said, no, we won't cross over into Cascade. You know, they'll cross over into Macokey because. You know, but they would not allow crossover, and I even trained Lamont because. A quarter mile from you is the Lamont telephone.
You, you're just in a bad spot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It's gotta be a really bad spot, I mean, my mom and dad, they had to go almost a half a mile through a patistry to get the internet. And they got.
But, but, I mean, they, they finally got it, they finally got it in, but I mean, I ended up having to go to Cavalec. To train a radio, because the, the old DSL was so bad. And I mean, it, I could not work from home. So once Cascade was able to get in there.
Well, that, that's, I think I'm on, who's. Kind of thing in place. But yeah, if you look at a map, an internet map, eastern Iowa is really, you know, in good shape compared to the rest of the state, so I don't see. I don't see any dollars coming over here, you know, for, for the broadband initiative.
But finally, we're.
And so anything else, and other topics?
You look at that list as you presented it, it seems like a rather vanilla, generic. Kind of.
It is.
List, but that's good, because that's where the committee will flush it out and kind of answer specific to our county. And kind of help get our fine tune product. But at least kind of have to be this way, just because.
Well, and it's, it'll be interesting to see what people think. And where, where do they say, oh, very strongly agree, or very strongly disagree. That can be very interesting results, especially if we can get a really broad cross section, so. But yeah, these would be. Yeah, I like that vanilla. Yeah, okay, so we can make those revisions. And that, that was my, that would be my. Presentation, and then what I needed.
So then you guys are gonna decide who to reach out to within those groups, then I think.
And we have a work session with the supervisors. So we'll get some more input there and try to finalize that, so we can get going on that, get people energized. Getting, getting us some input. That also helps get word out, that sort of thing, so. Dan and I, as I mentioned, are working on the website, it'll be posted on ECIO's website. That's what we've typically done for other comprehensive plans. We're doing that for Preston's plan right now, and so I think that's. That works pretty well, but we also can work with Lori on. Putting something on. Jackson County. Government website too, so there's different ones for people in access. Project information. And so, for.
Monica, I'm just trying to throw it back to you, since you have a forum now.
Oh, yes. Do we want to, yeah. Approve the minutes from in the previous meeting.
Sandra, you there? Sandra? She just, oh, she just muted herself. Sandra, you're muted, can, whatever you did, there you go, go ahead and. Did you hear? Okay.
There, well, I knew that we approved that.
I had motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sandra? Did you?
I.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Okay.
So with no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
On second.
He's adjourned.
All right.
Thank you, Sandra, thank you, Sandra.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Thanks, Dan.
Good night. Thanks, everyone.